Okay, it's 6:30, so we're gonna begin. A good evening and welcome. Before we start our proceedings, I'd like to highlight the safety protocols and expectations. Due to CDC guidance placing Kent County in a substantial risk category for the transmission of the COVID-19 Delta variant, we are requiring masks indoors for anyone on the grounds of GRPS property for all students, staff, and visitors regardless of vaccination status. If you need a mask, these are available at the entrances. Public comment cards and meeting agendas are available at the tables located at the board chambers at both entrances. Once you fill out a comment card, please submit this in the drop box next to the comment cards. Our board assistants, assistant will collect the cards when I call for public comment and deliver them to the board secretary, Ms. Lewis. I will call each individual one at a time to address the board at the presentation table. On behalf of our superintendent, Dr. Leidran Robey, and the Board of Education, thank you for being here in attendance with us. And our GSPS students and scholars, if you are here this evening and you would like to make a comment, please see the box that is especially marked for students and scholars. We will invite you to come forward at the agenda item, public comment section of our agenda to honor your time this evening. I will call this meeting to order. Today is November 1, 2021. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible).
Ms. Lewis, please call the roll. Reverend Mathias?
Present.
Mr. Ross is excused. Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Dr. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Flores?
Present.
Ms. Grant?
Here.
Ms. Lewis is here. President Shaki is excused. We have a call. Wonderful. May I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
No motion, support.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. First up, we have celebrations.
So, good evening. I'm going to invite Executive Director Matthew Beersford and the Golden K of Grand Rapids Kiwanis Club for a special presentation on behalf of our third and fourth graders.
Yes, good evening, Dr. Robey and our esteemed board. So nice to be here tonight to bring this celebration forward. Tonight I have Mr. Nelson Han, the president of Golden K Kiwanis Club, along with Peter Satterweight, the Dictionary Project Chairman, to celebrate an annual tradition that has returned to GRPS after just a one-year hiccup, thanks to a pandemic. We got it back on track and we took care of the students from last year, too, that are now fourth graders. So I'd like to introduce President Han.
Okay, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. This is a book that is dear to all of our hearts because it's great for our kids and for their learning experience, and they can take it home eventually and really learn from it because there's a lot of history and so forth in the back of this book as well as words to learn. But we've been doing this for 15 years now. We started out doing the third grade in fall of 2006, and we gave out to the third graders at that time 1,456 of the dictionaries. This year, with the third and the fourth grade receiving them, we are going to do just a few more, but we're going to be doing 2,198. So that's a lot of kids that are going to receive, we think, a rich blessing to learn and to carry with them throughout their lives. Thank you for this opportunity to serve the kids of this big city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thank the Kiwanis as a fellow parent, too, of now a sixth grader who still uses his dictionary at his home desk to get his spelling right when his power cord may not be found for that Chromebook. Thank you, gentlemen.
This is awesome.
Well, if you, if you received books before, I pick up those and they go ahead and ask for sessions that you have over the year with Grand Rapids Public Schools.
Thank you.
You give and you take away every single year.
And as a reference to the Reverend, we have a new word in the dictionary for children that's called chell, which is often spelled Miss Felle, but
Thank you.
we had a couple of students who, parents were chellus in the symphony, and they felt very bad that chell was not in the dictionary in the past, and we have gotten the director of the Dictionary Project to add that word to the dictionary along with their other additions of new presidents and new statistics.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chellus, appreciate it.
Well, next we have our report from our student representatives, and we have Ms. Calderon.
We had our Wednesday, good evening. We had our meeting last Wednesday, and we talked, the students had a lot to report on. We all felt as if the seniors had a really difficult time this time of year since it is time to apply for colleges or secondary education, and so we felt as if there just wasn't enough attention put on to the seniors as one would want. So, one good thing that we took from that meeting was that we set, we are putting aside two afternoons for seniors to receive help from the counselor and other educators to apply for education, our post-secondary education. And so that was a really good thing that we were able to take out from that, from that meeting. We also went over the ESSR, ESSR project with Mr. Or-
Oberst.
Oberst, thank you. And so we all had a little bit of input to put into that. Everybody thought it was a really thought-out plan, and we just talked about some things that we could possibly add to that. And Thursday, across the district, was a second test date for seniors to be able to retake, so a lot of seniors were able to take advantage of that and retake that for another opportunity. Thank you.
Yeah, I look forward to hearing what you had Mr. Oberst add. Did you hear that?
Any other questions or comments?
I do have one question. So, that block of time that's set aside for seniors with the counselors, will that be for each high school?
Yes, it will be.
That's wonderful, thank you.
Any other questions? All righty, thank you for your report. And then we have a public comment for board agenda items. None? Okay, we will move right along to the secretaries' report. Yes, the Academic Achievement Committee will be meeting Wednesday, November 3, at 4:30 in the Franklin Campus Administration Building Auditorium. The Legislative Committee will be meeting on Friday, November 12, at 3:00 PM, Franklin Campus Administration Building Auditorium. Committee Chair updates. We'll go with the Finance Committee meeting.
Well, good evening, everyone. Yeah, we'll be coming here with some purchasing updates and then, of course, some information on the collective bargaining resolutions that are taking place, and so we look forward to sharing that information with you tonight.
All right. Policy Committee. We will be presenting the policies during the agenda. Ms. Lewis, can you clarify the, what reading we are on these policies? These are first, first readings for all of these. Okay, wonderful. And then we have our Superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. And so this evening, we are going to get an overview of the strategic plan update. We are coming to the conclusion of Phase Two, which has included different meetings in and around Grand Rapids, in our schools and community centers and other locations where we've rolled out the framework of the data related to our strategic planning to get input from students and staff and families and community members and business partners. And Mrs. Greenway will invite her to come in via Zoom to kind of give an overview and then to let the board know what the next steps are.
Good evening, Dr. Robey, Vice President Williams, members of the board. John Helmuth here, virtually, to just kind of tee up this conclusion of Phase Two of the strategic planning process. It has been a very busy couple weeks. To give you an idea, we had more than 31 different input sessions with students, parents, staff members, community members, and then some. To give you kind of a sneak peek of what we're gonna be sharing in more detail a week from now at your upcoming retreat, there were more than 80,000 emails, robocalls, text messages, with 51,000 total opens. We had 34,400 social media reach. That also included 130,000 emails that were sent to promote these, and that's just to name a few. We did the, the digital marketing that was mailed home, 10,000 direct mail, along with 15,000 flyers that were sent home with students, and, and that's just a sneak peek. It's, it's been a really exciting opportunity to take that draft framework that Martha and her team put together based on the input from Phase One, and to really take it back out and say, did we get this right? What, what do you like? What do you not like? How do we improve upon it? And just hats off to all the facilitators who were trained by Martha and her team to facilitate all these different input sessions. Huge shout out to Erica Van Dyke, Carolina, and Raven Odom, our friends at Urban Core Collective and Grand Rapids Community Foundation, who came alongside us and worked closely to help really turn out individuals and organizations for these input sessions, and we're just excited for the opportunity to prevent, present the full rapport and findings and have a vote on this next Mon- next Monday, excuse me. So with that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Martha Greenway.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I also want to reference that out of concern that some people may not be able to get out and actually attend a session, the district did add some virtual sessions that people could participate in. And additionally, we created an online survey with the same questions that are asked in the community forums. And at this time, we have over 100 responses to that survey that will also be included in our analysis. So I just want to foreshadow for the board how this information is being compiled and what you could expect to see next week at your board retreat. So every single comment, whether it comes from a forum or whether it comes from a survey, is reviewed individually. Those are then coded and put into categories. So there is one comprehensive report, again, that includes input from the survey, the community forums, as well as the more targeted sessions that are being led by the district and the community partners. So our report will allow us to see the major categories of input, and within those categories, we can also note any notable differences between types of stakeholders. There were separate sessions held for employees and then for community members and parents, and then, of course, we also know which ones were more focused on community partners and outside organizations. For this phase of work, we're really focusing on three questions. What works well? Is there anything you disagree with? And what is missing? So it is the response to those questions that we will be discussing in depth on Thursday because those really inform the strategic plan framework and what we need to go forward. I will tell you that the response to those questions generally generate four types of information. One is what people like and what we want to make sure we honor as we go forward. Secondly, things that might actually require changing the strategic plan draft framework. And so these could be some additions or deletions to the framework. They could also be changes in language, things that don't resonate with people or have negative connotations. We will learn a lot about what people think needs to be addressed in more detail in the next steps. And so a lot of what the board can expect to hear is actually not necessarily what might change the framework, but that will inform the work going forward. And then the fourth category that, as I have preliminarily reviewed some of the input, I can assure you will definitely emerge and sort of demonstrates our theory that people will find a way to tell you what's important to them regardless of what question you ask them, is that there are clearly some expectations and concerns about the remainder of the process and how the community will be informed, engaged, and, and how the, the district will remain true to the strategic plan and ensure that it is actually implemented. So there are some questions or concerns that will emerge along those lines. So on Monday night, we will share for each of those questions, what works well, anything you disagree with, what is missing, and then kind of other comments that don't fit into those three buckets. We will share with you the predominant categories of findings. We will also be able to give you access to the verbatims within each comment, and then any changes that we see emerging to the strategic plan framework as the, as a result of that. I want to go ahead and foreshadow what happens next and how the stakeholder input will also inform that. So after November 8th, when we are solid on the framework, the strategic themes and the objectives, we will then utilize the vast stakeholder engagement we have where we ask people, what ideas do you have about how these strategic themes should be implemented? And just for a reminder, right now, we're working with five strategic themes. Meet holistic student needs, optimize and value all school options, ensure equitable access and outcomes, enhance curriculum and program opportunities, and cultivate and engage productive, more diverse workforce. So there will be an equally detailed review and categorization of stakeholder input for each of those strategic themes. Those will be used, then, to get to the next level of specificity about what strategic initiatives need to be in the strategic plan. I also want to note that in our gathering of information about this next step of what work needs to happen in each strategic theme, we ran sessions with high school students at every single high school. So that ensures the student voice is included, and we will analyze the student input separate from everyone else's to be sure that the student voice doesn't get clouded out by having a lot of other people's comments. So we'll look at the student input separately when it comes to understanding what people desire for the district to do next. And so after that, we will essentially land in January with a set of specific strategic initiatives that, once again, are driven by stakeholder input. And then I want to assure the board that we're not finished with stakeholder engagement at that point. When we get to our Phase Three, which will take place in the first quarter of 2022, as the strategic initiative implementation plans are developed, there will be further input with the stakeholders that will be affected by that strategic initiative, and every strategic initiative implementation plan will include an ongoing stakeholder engagement plan to ensure that there is a continuous feedback loop with the affected stakeholders over the life of the plan. So that was a lot of talking on my part, so let me just stop and see what questions the board has at this point.
Just a quick summary. So we'll get, and I'm gonna be, won't use lengthy terms here, but essentially we'll have a plan presented to us next week based on the community input. Then there will be new input sessions about how to implement that plan, and then, beginning in January, they'll be, we'll, we will begin implementing the plan with feedback from the community. Is that correct? So-
So let me restate that. We're not actually going to have to do another round of stakeholder engagement to get to the specific initiatives because we took advantage of this round of input to also ask people about that.
Okay.
So we've got, we've got that now, but we're just, for Monday, we're going to focus on what people said about the framework itself.
Okay.
Then we will move forward with what initiatives need to go into place, but that input has already been gathered as well. And then, yes, you are correct. In January, you won't quite be ready to launch, so to speak, but what you will be ready to do is to create the concrete steps, resource requirements, and timelines that will guide your implementation. And I would also just say that I think the, the majority of action in this strategic plan will probably start in the next school year, although there may be some things that can move forward in second semester of this school year.
Thanks.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Any other questions, colleagues? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on. And we have a lot to get to, so. We have a substantial amount of action items tonight, and so purchasing agenda. Mr. Oberst, are you coming forward?
Good evening, Vice President Williams, Superintendent Robey, and board members. One, two, three, four. First four act items are under my jurisdiction, so to speak, first being the purchasing agenda, which went to Finance Committee at their meeting last Monday, and I'll be happy to answer any questions the rest of the board may have on, on that purchasing agenda.
I do have one about-
Yes.
-the school, school psychologists?
Yes.
Is that a firm that we, or a group of psychologists that we use?
That, that is a contract. Mr. Montgomery has worked for the district on a number of occasions over the last, certainly since I've been here.
So it's a contract just with him?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And he will be doing research on IEPs. That would be his role.
Okay, so it's special ed?
Yes.
Have we hired or do we intend to hire any school psychologists or any of those folks for general ed classes?
We, we have, you know, like a lot of positions, we've been looking, we've been short psychologist for a few years. In fact, we didn't, we didn't use contracted psychologist, I think, until maybe two years ago, and they've just been very difficult to find, so. Yeah, that's, that's why we had to go with, with Mr. Montgomery, Dr. Montgomery again, so.
So special ed?
Yeah.
And I have one other question.
Sure.
Purchase of a five-year math software program called Alex, Artificial Intelligent Learning and Assessment System. Could I have a little more information about that?
We, we are currently working with a community college in developing a transitional math course for seniors that will better prepare them to move from high school into college. And as part of that curriculum development, which we intend to pilot, I understand, is next fall, this software, which is currently utilized by the community college, which does a number of things, including assessing student performance, and so this is a licensing to allow our folks in our SDS area and our academic team to talk with GRCC's same-
So is this something that it would just be for seniors or is it something that's used all along?
Well, no, this, the, the curriculum's being developed?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, this, this software supports the curriculum that's being developed, which is intended for seniors. And as you will imagine, with transition into college, the intent would be, I believe, is to make it available throughout the promise zone high schools, so not just GR, not just Grand Rapids Public Schools, but it'd be beneficial for all the high schools within our promise zone.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I have some experience because my, some of my summer program students take that when they go into GRCC, but it's basically a way to really understand what students know about math rather than just their, their grades in a math class. So are they ready for Algebra I, II, college level?
In other words, if the kids-
It's an assessment.
Yeah, so the kids take the test. If they go to community college or Ferris or whatever, then the college knows where the kid should be placed as far as-
Exactly.
Okay, that sounds good.
So I have a follow-up question to that, though. So I understand that we're allocating some funds towards that. You're mentioned to helping all of the schools in the promise zone. Is this something that other districts are also allocating funds for, or was that just?
Yes. They pay, don't they pay a portion?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we haven't, we haven't got the structure in place. We're still developing the curriculum, certainly.
But it'll be evenly distributed?
I'm just, yeah, just suggesting, the conversation is taking place that-
Okay.
Potentially, promise zone, yeah.
Potentially?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Okay. And with regards to the curriculum, will we be needing to allocate dollars toward that in the future, since you're saying that this hasn't quite been developed yet?
Well, well, right now, it's, it's just people time, so there's really no allocation take place. It's because we're paying the salaries of, of our curriculum folks that are involved in this also, so, yeah. And, and there is actually, to complete that conversation, there, there is some additional funds coming from the GRCC side to support some of the additional costs. Right now, our only cost is people cost, which, again, is not additional to us, and then this, this licensing cost, if you would approve it tonight.
And it, and it does align with what the current counseling department is doing to, to prepare our kids for college, correct? I mean, there's assessments already that they do, either eighth grade or through ninth, 10th, and so forth, in preparation for some of these kinds of things that this is going to aid in.
I understand, yeah, yeah.
Yes, it is. There's alignment of standards so that it should flow through as students are getting prepared for that post-secondary experience. Ms., Dr. Gorman, do you have any other?
Actually, Mr. Harper was on the course, so-
Harper, yep, okay. Welcome, Mr. Harper.
Hi.
Good evening, Dr. Robey, members of the board. Yeah, I'm happy to, happy to help. My, my colleague, Amy Pauni, math curriculum chair, has been working very closely with the team developing the, the curriculum for this pilot course, and the particular Alex program, as Dr. Baker described, is, is really an assessment to, to determine, particularly for our seniors, where, you know, where do they, they lie in relation to their actual skill level moving into, into college-level math, math classes? And so, and by utilizing that early on rather than, because oftentimes, the Alex program would be used after they graduate, when they're entering, entering college, okay? And the idea with the pilot course is they would, that, that, that software would be used then to help guide their experience in their senior-level math class to really target and build those skill sets to ensure that they are prepared to transition to college-level math, right? So that's, hopefully that answered your question around the purpose.
Yeah, otherwise, the students end up taking that and then get placed at basically a remedial-level math class when they're in college.
Correct.
So they're paying college tuition for what they should have-
So rather than doing it after they graduate, we're using it as a tool then to tailor their instruction during their senior-level math to make sure that they are prepared to take college-level math, not remedial math classes when they, when they go into enter-
They would take this as planned right now. They would take it in their senior year as a, an assessment to determine what their weaknesses are in the area of mathematics?
Yeah, weaknesses and, and, you know, strengths and weaknesses, but then that would be used then to, for the instructor in the pilot course, as, as Amy and the team have been devising it, that then that would inform the instruction that happens in that senior year, rather than waiting until after they graduate and then, and then realizing that they may be-
So there'd be one class that has not yet been-
Correct. And that, that's, as, as mentioned, then that would be a pilot course that would run in the fall of 2022, and then with the intent to expand it to all- uh, and then with the intent to expand it to all, all high schools.
Okay, I have one more question. It says, "Payment for educational training services provided to Innovation Central High School." Can you tell me what that means?
Where are we at?
Uh, support materials? Right by the Alex, just over Alex.
Life EMS.
Where am I? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on page, that's a separate thing.
While you look for that, Mr. Oberst, I had a quick question regarding the pilot. Um, where is that pilot going to take place in 2022?
I believe we were looking at Union High School as the first. Um, we had also discussed potentially Auto Hills, but I believe the team at Union is the one that we were looking at for a pilot, and it will be one course, um, to, to implement, learn, learn the system, work the kinks out of the curriculum, train the, train the teachers, and then look to expand it after that.
And I have a, so currently, what math curriculum are you using? Chicago math, what, what?
No, 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 so we, we, we have, we have our, our, our goal math curriculum that actually is K through Algebra I, and then we have targeted, targeted math curriculum in, in, uh, geometry, Algebra II, and then there's, of course, other courses that are available as well, pre-calculus and statistics and those sorts of things, yeah.
Well, yeah, um, one of our academies, Innovation Central, the health services, we have, or EMS, uh, EMS has been providing, Life EMS has been providing, uh, training in, um, those kinds of services to that healthcare academy for a number of years. So we, they've been a partner within Innovation for a number of years.
Thank you.
Mr. Oberst, do you want, um, go forward on the agenda amend, uh, amend them?
Well, if you want, why don't we, why don't you, the board-
Want to go one at a time?
Yeah, pass the purchasing agenda first, then I'll get the addendum.
All righty.
Separately.
All right, colleagues, any other discussion with regards to the purchasing agenda? May I have a motion to approve?
It's moved. Forward.
Ms. Lewis, please call the roll.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused, Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. President Shaki is excused, motion carries.
Thank you, then, yes, the, the addendum, this was added, uh, subsequent, subsequent to the, um, oh, thank you, thanks, John, yeah. Subsequent to the, uh, uh, finance committee meeting last week, and, uh, we've been in the process of, of assessing, um, the operation vehicles we need. A lot of this relates to the needs for these trucks for, most immediately, snow plowing services for, as you recall, we had some challenges getting some outside folks. We do, we do some of our own snow plowing, and then, uh, as, as vehicles for repair and maintenance as they go to various buildings. So this is, uh, was on the initial Esser Funding Investment List. It's very difficult to us, but to buy vehicles. Actually, there's no other source of buying vehicles except for general fund dollars, so this will go to buy, as you can see, nine Ford F-250s and six Ford 150s. And as I'm sure you've been hearing, there is, you know, supply chain disruptions in the automotive, so this is through a purchasing cooperative through the state, which is why, uh, and then that, the dealers at Woodhaven, Michigan, it's part of that purchasing cooperat, uh, cooperative that we have worked with a number of occasions, so.
All righty. Any discussion?
So, so I, as I understand, there, there is not a bidding process in this?
This satisfies the bidding requirement using this cooperative. It's part of the board, part of our board policy.
But there are other vendors locally, who we just decided to go this process?
Well, there, there, there's potential there are vendors locally, but none of which have the best price, which is what this ensures.
Any other discussion? If not, may I have a motion to approve? The purchasing agenda addendum?
Motion to approve.
Support. Ms. Lewis, please call the roll.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused, Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Third item is the financial statements, as I mentioned on work session last week. The audited financial statements have been finalized, and, uh, so this would be, um, for the board to approve and accept the, uh, June 30th, 2021 audited financial statements.
Any discussion?
And I, I will, I feel to mention, they are unchanged from the drafts we talked about last Monday, so.
All righty. Motion to approve the financial statements?
Forward.
Ms. Lewis, please call the roll.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused, Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. President Shaki is excused, motion carries.
Thank you. And then lastly, we have two collective bargaining agreements that need your ratification, first being the Grand Rapids Educational Officers Association, a small union that primarily represents our family support specialists and our junior ROTC instructors. You see the summary included in your packet, three-year agreement. Hourly wage increases ranging from 2.7% to 3.6% for 21, 22-year. We granted a step for all those eligible, and then we have wage reopeners for the 22, 23, and 23, 24-year. Insurance hard caps were increased, and, um, for beginning 2022, and then into January 1st of 2023 and 2024. And we also included for the first time that they will receive pay for up to five Act of God school closure days. And then the other, the second, uh, CBA that was settled was with the Grayson Group, which represents our childcare workers, our LPNs, our, uh, occupational therapist assistants and physical therapy assistants primarily. Again, a three-year agreement with, uh, annual reopeners. Hourly rate increases ranging from 4.6% to 6.6% for the current year. Increase insurance hard caps beginning January 1st, 2022, and then also in 2023 and 2024. They also will receive up to five Act of God school closure days payment for those, and then staff will receive a 200 annual stipend for attainment of a bachelor's degree or higher. So I, we need for the board to separately ratify and approve both of those, the GREOA and the Grayson, um, contracts.
Okay. Any discussion? Questions? If not, may I have a motion to approve the Grand Rapids Educational Officers Association Contract Ratification Resolution?
It's moved.
Support.
Ms. Lewis, please call the roll.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused, Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores? Dr. Flores, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Lewis, yes, President Shaki is excused, motion carries.
Okay. And then, uh, is there any discussion with regards to the Grand Rapids Association Childcare Workers Employment Training Specialists, Non-Certified Teachers License, Practical Nurses Certified Occupational Therapist Assistance and Physical Therapist Assistance Resolution? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Ms. Lewis, please call the roll.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused, Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes, President Shaki is excused, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oberst. We have, um, some action items with regards to some policy changes. And the first policy is policy number 3660, be its quotations and local preferences. Basically, this policy would expand the area to include all of Kent County for the bidding for, uh, vendors. The rationale was this larger area where we might be able to work with more minority groups. Uh, we are not receiving enough responses from minority businesses in Grand Rapids. It was approved by the policy committee with the caveat that, uh, Grand Rapids Public Schools will track the data to see if, uh, this addition really makes a difference.
Clarification, uh, I, I thought we excluded the, uh, language regarding the expansion of, of, of the policy, of the preference policy to not include Kent County. Wasn't that our vote? Am I wrong on that?
No, you're right. Say that again?
The, uh, we approved the policy with the exception of, of, of Kent County. We did not change it to include the expansion of the boundary to Kent County, to include Kent County.
Include Kent County?
We just went Grand Rapids. We voted down that.
Did we vote it down?
I, I remember us saying we wouldn't move it toward, to the board.
That we are not going to include Kent County?
That's how I remember it.
Okay.
So, just, so now it's here-
Never had this happen before, but Sharon Pitts wasn't with me, so.
So now it's here before the whole board to consider then?
I'm sorry.
So it's here for the whole board to consider, so.
Is the first reading correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So, as it, that is, as it is written here, it, it changes our previous policy that gives a 5%, um, what's it called, a 5% discount, is it?
Right, discount.
A discount for vendors that are from Grand Rapids. And it changes it to vendors that are in Kent County.
Oh, Kent County, yep.
So it-
Yes. Isn't that what I said?
Yep. Yes.
Yes, he's just reiterating.
Right, so I just want to make sure we're, I'm clear on what we're talking about.
Okay.
And then, and was, this was brought to the committee by the administration to consider, and the rationale was, is that not enough businesses existed within the city of Grand Rapids, or at least not enough businesses within the city of Grand Rapids were, uh, putting in bids? Is that correct?
And there was substantial debate with whether or not we should, uh, extend this to Kent County. Uh, you know, one, one of the arguments, and I, you know, I initiated the, the argument that, um, we needed to keep it localized to Grand Rapids, I mean, otherwise, why have a Grand Rapids First policy? And it is directly tied to economic development of our businesses within Grand Rapids. And the demographics of Grand Rapids would suggest that over time, that, uh, that many, uh, diverse owners of companies would have a greater opportunity, given that preference of, of the, the Grand Rapids First policy. And that's really what, what drives, uh, or what drove the, the decision to not extend it to Kent County.
The other factor that we were presented with was that the city had opened it up to Kent County in their policy. And then we had discussed whether or not the city had seen any growth in bids because of that, and there wasn't a lot of data regarding that. So there, it, it hasn't yet proved to be beneficial or not beneficial. There's not enough data.
So then, basically, we're not changing this policy?
Well, we're debating whether or not to change it now. I mean, so it's still here.
Well, as we presented it, rather, the way we presented it.
The way it's presented before the board is to consider this as a board, so.
Point of order, you will, it, when a committee decides that, that it, it is not going to be included, then it dies in committee.
That's not true.
Okay.
That is not our policy, that we do that. And I'm not suggesting that I disagree with your rationale, I'm just, I, it seems like it's something that might, might be worth considering. One is, it depends on what the goal of this policy really is. And so, and, and I think that that's important to consider, is the goal to support businesses within the city of Grand Rapids, or is the goal to increase the, um, businesses, the diverse businesses that work with Grand Rapids Public Schools? And I think that that goal should be discussed. And secondly, well-
That point was brought up as well, I had made the point of, it, it almost seems like we have to have the discussion of what is more important to us? Is it more important to stay local in the city of Grand Rapids, or is it more important? It's almost like there's a hierarchy of, or is it more important to have minority and, and women-owned businesses represented?
So can I ask a question, just to clarify before we start a large debate? So the committee agreed to not expand the boundaries. Is that correct?
We agreed to not bring it to the full board, this policy.
Okay. Dr. Baker, are you against that?
No, I, I, it's my, and, it's my impression that the administration can continue to, can, the committee can, so if we were, if this was the finance committee, and
Right.
the finance committee said, you know, two out of three, don't support sending, don't support this purchasing agenda going onto the full board, then that the administration could come to the next board meeting and make an appeal to the full board to support a purchasing agenda.
Right. It, it more so sounds like this was an oversight, though. So because of that, I'm just asking, do you have an objection to what the committee has already voted on?
No, I, I, I'm just, I just think that since it's here, we should discuss it, and that it's okay, because evidently, it's, I mean, we still have an agenda item here.
Right, so.
And, yeah.
That's just why I'm asking, because you're the only one who's kind of debating, so I just want to know, do you want to?
I, I do think, and, and you're right, Dr. Baker, do we want to just stay in Grand Rapids and, um, and, and get our business from here? That's not to say that businesses don't live, or, or minority-owned businesses are not in Kent County, because they are, obviously. And so, I think we need to look at that. If we're saying, we only want to do business in Grand Rapids, and we want those businesses, hopefully, to be, uh, minority-owned and so forth, that, that's another, that's another issue to me. I don't think it's prudent to just say, let's stay within the bounds of Grand Rapids, because we want to only, um, draw business from minority-owned businesses, even though they might be outside of our, uh, of Grand Rapids, uh, and might bid, uh, so.
I would, I would say, um, just kind of hearing the conversation from the, um, committee members, as well as this discussion around it, it, it seems as though not, is, the intent is not just to, um, support those minority-owned businesses as well, but to facilitate, uh, economic, um, growth for those businesses in Grand Rapids with that type of intentionality. So, um, I would advise that we, as a, a board, send this back to committee, as it seems that there is some language disparity and more conversation that needs to be had around this.
Yeah, I, and, and it would be nice, so I appreciate this discussion, and I'm not trying to debate the, your, your thought process. I think it's a, it's an interesting and important question, and also, I think the data, certainly the data that the city has brought to us, is that, and it, it would be an interesting conversation. I do know that when this policy was created, it was created, um, as, it was, it was created after the city created theirs with the same intention that the city had, which was to focus on local businesses, but also to support, um, black, you know, businesses in the city that would create a broader diverse force and give them an advantage to participating. The, it would be also nice to have the data, like, you know, are there businesses that we may want to contract with that work a lot in the city but happen to be located in Kentwood or Wyoming? That would be something that would be nice, just, so, uh, data. But secondly, I do think it is important, the other thing I think that's at issue is, who brought this to the full board? And it sounds like it wasn't the committee, so the administration can bring it to the full board, but it sounds like this, this is here as it's presented as an oversight, because the committee didn't send it to the full board. So, the, the administration, and it sounds like we don't really know that.
Well, we can discuss it at our next meeting and make a recommendation at that point.
Yeah, I would like so. Yeah, I would like some clarification on what the role of the committees are in relationship to the discussion.
Okay, hopefully, I'll get this one right.
Sorry. I'm so sorry, Ms. Lewis, but I will say that, as far as I remember, it wasn't a, definitely not, we don't ever want to open it up to Kent County. It was more of, it seems like we need to think about the details of this a little bit more, so let's hold off on it.
Okay.
And I would also say that it, it seems that we, as a district, need to develop a way of attracting these folks. And so, holding luncheons, explaining the process, looking at how you bond, all of those kinds of things are ways that we can inform small businesses, because often, when you're doing it all, you don't have time to have all that knowledge. And so, a whole lot of other partnerships need to come into play, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and so forth, perhaps, that might aid in preparing these, as well as us ourselves. This is our process. This is how you can meet the criterias. And then helping and partnering and, and all of that kind of stuff.
If I can add one more issue, because, Dr. Flores, you raise this question a lot, and I think it's important to get to a place where all of us are comfortable with the way this process is done. And so, does this need language that, I know that process is something that's the role of the administration, but does this need language that, not just related to bids, but the process of getting bids? Because I know that you're constantly asking this question, which I think is fair, you know, how do we get this bid? And so, you know, do we need that in a policy? And is this the right place, if it is? Or is that something that is not the board's role, and that should be? But it would be nice to get to a place where we're all in agreement as to what the process should be.
Well, and, and I'd like to reiterate the, and underscore the fact that we need a process that promotes equity. And if we're about equity, then we need to demonstrate that in our policies and in our processes. And bidding is a process that enables those to compete in an equitable fashion, and to be provided a preference, because they are Grand Rapids-based, contributes to our economy in Grand Rapids. It is not to say that we would exclude minority vendors from outside of Kent County, I mean, outside of Grand Rapids, in the balance of Kent County. I mean, they would too, would be considered, however, they would not receive the privilege or the preference of a Grand Rapids First policy. And that's what's important here.
Right.
So we don't have to vote, rather, we'll just take it back to, to the committee. Yep.
And I would agree with you, Dr. Flores, where, as a board, I think policy is under us. That is something that we do have input and drive on. And so, if we are not, if it's something that we value and something that we take serious, it is, it should be in the policy, and we should take those steps to make it happen. So, the, since we are sending Policy Number 3660 back to committee, the next policy that's on agenda item for action is Policy 8482, Student Health Services and Delegation of Services.
All right, if you look on the fourth page, basically, what Kim Behren has suggested is that there are not enough staff to administer the shots. And a policy that we just invoked within the last couple of years said that we were going to be much more specific about this. But at this time, Kim has suggested that we really need to train people, because we have many, 36 kids who need some sort of insulin or some sort of shots, and there are only 18 nurses. So, if they're getting a shot every day, there aren't enough nurses to do this. So basically, what she said is, basically, we'll change it back to the way it was before. These shots will be administered once the person who is administering them have been trained in the proper procedure.
And, and that would be within their licenser? You know, whether they're LPN, RN, and so forth?
No, I, the way I understood it was that there would be other people who.
As long as they were properly trained. So, a classroom teacher, for example, for insulin, you could give a shot, as an example.
And they, my understanding, too, is that they would train health aides and so on to administer the shot.
Yep.
So that, what we're doing is changing that language back to the way it was about a year ago, maybe two.
And in terms of liability?
We are covered.
Okay.
But if you go through.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
They're trained, and you sign off saying, trained on.
Okay.
Here.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
If not, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve Policy 8482.
Support. Ms. Lewis, please call the roll.
Yes. Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused. Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. President Shaki is excused. Motion carries.
Next policy is by law, 1370, Public Participation.
Basically, this is a, we had to change this language, the way that public meetings are held, and who can talk at the meetings. Everybody is free to talk at the meetings. But we had to include and define breach of peace. And basically, what Ms., who was with us that day?
Me.
Neil, Ms. Neil, of course, said that this is language that's coming from the government, and so, it's not something that we can decide not to put in our.
Looks like it streamlined it some, too.
Pardon?
Looks like it streamlined it some, too.
Okay.
Pardon?
Did you notice a typo? Which is kind of a humorous typo. A breach of the peach.
First reading, first reading.
I thought peaches were meant to be breached, but anyway.
All right. I didn't write it.
Just making notes, so it doesn't get in the.
Any further discussion? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
Support, or, sorry, so moved.
Support.
Ms. Lewis, please call the roll.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused. Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant, yes. President Shaki is excused. Motion carries.
Yes. Awesome.
With, with the edited, edited change of, you know, breaches of the peach are allowed, so. I'm sorry, what was that? Peach. Yeah, we, we said that could happen, yep.
All righty, colleagues, this next group is going to be a grouping, as the policy, the changes are the same throughout the policy, and the changes are particular around hair texture, type, and style. Policy 8018, discriminatory harassment of students. Policy 8015, non-discrimination and complaint procedure. Policy 5035, discriminatory harassment of employees and applicants. Policy 5170, recruitment. Policy 8010, equal education opportunity. And lastly, Policy 5030, non-discrimination and complaint procedure. Any discussion? All righty, hearing none, may I have a motion to?
Well, I, I did have some questions. So, here we mentioned athletics, and then discrimination in terms of gender, how they identify themselves. How is that going to affect a person who wants to play a sport of a different gender or identified gender as they identify?
That is not part of.
Is that what we're discussing?
No.
We're just discussing the hair.
It was added for hair texture, that, in all of those items, you'll see the line which was added, which says, we will not discriminate against hair texture. That, that's specifically what, what the amendments are saying in these items.
As the language was changed to accommodate the worrying about hair. So.
So you'll see that highlighted throughout.
I, I did, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve this policy grouping.
Support.
Ms. Lewis, please call the roll.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused. Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. President Shaki is excused. Motion carries.
All righty. And is there a motion to approve the consent agenda grouping?
So moved. Support.
Support.
Ms. Lewis, please call the roll.
Reverend Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross is excused. Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. President Shaki is excused. Motion carries.
Thank you all. No, that was a lot tonight. Under the president announcement, President Shaki would like me to encourage as many of our board colleagues to attend MASB conference between November 11th through 14th. If there's any part of your schedule that could allow you to attend, she is encouraging to, to please do so. And then additionally, she has a reminder of our work session on November 8 at 1:00 PM. And, any public comment for non-agenum items only? Okay. If you could see the assistant to give her your card.
Hello, my name is DeAndre Jones. I'm a community activist, political advisor, I'm a bestselling author now.
Mr. Jones, I'm sorry, I'm going to have Ms. Lewis read our protocols and procedure for public comment, and then we'll go, jump right into you.
All right, cool, thank you. Sorry, I'm so used to speaking at the city commission.
Individuals, we call to the speaker table one at a time to address the board during public comment time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. You will need to state your full name before providing your comment. We will then start the timer at the beginning of your public comment time, and provide you with a one-minute notice indicating that only one minute remains. You will need to complete your comment time, about being notified that the three minutes are up. Board members do not respond to public comment. Concerns will be brought to the attention of the appropriate sat. We value your input, and thank you for sharing.
Hello, my name is DeAndre Jones. I'm a political advisor, community activist, I'm a bestselling author now, which is pretty cool. So I'm 27 years old, and I'm a bestselling author on Amazon, it's crazy. But I'm here to talk about my project. I'm trying to buy the Adelante High School, which is in a predominantly African-American Hispanic neighborhood. Very strategic about what I'm trying to do. I've been going to the strategic planning meetings. I've been giving a lot of input on renewable energy and sustainable business practices that the school can actually do to reinvest money into the education system, whether that's facilities, whether that's the students themselves, whether that's employee wages. I would look to purchase this school and do some workforce development and job training. I have a partner right now that I'm talking to, who has 20 years of experience in HR. He actually works with people to get them six-figure jobs, and he's worked in corporate America, who's worked at colleges. And so I have people behind me that are very, very good at what they do. Right now, I'm working on a prize right now, it's a million-dollar award. I don't know if I'm going to get it, or if I'll be a finalist, but hopefully I do. It's called the Stop Awards, and it's to basically transform education. I believe that's what I'm here to do. Education is something that is very dear to me. I'm looking to purchase this building. I also want to offer amenities like esports. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with the Detroit Pistons to talk to them about esports and grabbing the resources that they have to bring it to the city of Grand Rapids, because esports is the second-largest sport in the world, right behind the NFL. And if you look at the NFL, Colin Kaepernick, a lot of racism displayed there. I believe esports will surpass the NFL as the largest sport in the world. There are scholarship opportunities, the University of Michigan, Fair State, MSU, Aquinas College, who I have a meeting with Aquinas College, they have an esports program, too. If the board and the school district does implement esports, I ask that you guys implement as a varsity sport at the varsity level. I also ask that you, for the middle schools, that you implement it as a sport. You implement it as esports clubs for middle schoolers. This is something that is extracurricular activity, but kids actually have to have the grades. And I know a lot of kids and mothers complain about grades, but kids are always on video games, so this is a way to be able to create another, to move with the times, because I don't want the school district to be behind. I don't want to come here and see the next five years that we didn't implement the ideas that could have been transformative and literally generated millions of dollars of revenues and opportunities for kids that deserved this opportunity. And so, my name is DeAndre Jones, I'm the founder and CEO of Jump Ahead O3C. I do have business cards, I will pass them to you guys after this meeting, but I just wanted to show my face and just let you guys know that it's people that do care about equity, creating equitable opportunities and leveling the playing field, to show people that, I mean, we'll see what happens when the level, playing field is leveled. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you so much. And then we have superintendent comments.
Good evening. Just very quickly, I wanted to, I know that Ms. Greenway presented on the 30-something meetings that we've had across the city. I just also wanted to thank all of our many community members and, and folks who have come out through various meetings, Mr. Jones being one of them, and then also to our facilitators, our note takers, our greeters. We were a little club, where we were kind of a band going around from different venues. And so, thank you to them as well, because that was many, many evenings, in addition to doing the work during their, their day, to continue on to make sure that they were available and presenting and welcoming to our community members. And so, thank you to all of, all of you who have attended meetings as well, we do appreciate it. It's been a busy month, and we got a lot of great data, so.
Thank you. And board member comments? If I may start with Ms. Davis.
Sure. First of all, I just want to say I'm really excited about the student report tonight. It's just refreshing to hear that your input is affecting decisions that are being made up here, because I just think that's super important. You are firsthand, you know what's going on in the buildings and what we need. So, thank you for your participation in that, and thank you, Dr. Robie, for starting that group, to meet with you. I think that's pretty awesome. And then also, thank you to everybody in the community that has come out to the input sessions, or attended the virtual one, or done a survey, because without that information, we wouldn't be able to move forward with a really wonderful plan, so.
That's about it. Thank you. Dr. Baker?
Yes, I, thanks for what you had to say. Just probably different, I'm not sure this is the right place to bring it up, but just an update or just some information about what's happening with Dean Transportation, the last couple of meetings with the picketers out front, just like to get a briefing from administration about why we're.
I'm sorry, Dr. Baker, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Dean Transportation has been out front the last couple of meetings, and just, just a summary from the administration about what's going on, and why the board is being included in that conversation.
Tonight?
Oh, not tonight, no.
Oh, okay.
Well, I mean, yeah, it's up to you, but just, just something written, just let us know what's going on, yeah.
Reverend Mathias?
Yeah, again, just want to really echo, I think we feel the excitement of, of conversation and, and the what-if and, and what could be, as we're dialoguing about, you know, the next five to eight years in our district, and that's really exciting. It is good to see that our young people feel empowered to speak their mind and to get involved, both from their place, whether it's Union, or Ottawa, or any of our other high schools, but, but that sense that they're, they're part of making changes as well, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Dr. Flores?
Well, just an appreciation to our board for acknowledging Native American History Month, and, and just a note of encouragement to this board, looking at equity for Native Americans. It was, I think, prior to COVID that we reduced an administrator for Native American education, a leader to lead this district. And if we could, at some point in the future, consider putting more emphasis on, on Native American leadership within the school district, so that our programs and our, our services, our curriculum reflect the positive contributions of this community.
Thank you. And Ms. Grant?
No comment.
Ms. Lewis?
No comment.
Yes, Dr. Robie?
I apologize. Just a reminder to our community. I apologize, just a reminder to our community that we do have a district-wide school expo at Ottawa Hills High School this coming Thursday from 4:30 to 6:30. All of our schools will be on display to gather more information about each individual school as you are making school choices, and we invite everyone to come out. That's Ottawa Hills High School, Thursday, November 4th, from 4:30 until 6:30.
And, Ms. Williams, I have no comment. Meeting adjourned.